I've been able to advocate for affordable housing and using a Richmond-specific AMI. We're currently in the process of researching what it's going to be like to take Richmond's median income and use that to level and decide how much affordable housing we're going to build. I also introduced a legislation that implements the state's bike-lean policy so that we're using our purchasing power in an efficient way to be able to reduce our fossil fuel use in construction materials. Because I am a daughter of immigrants, I've also been a strong advocate for immigrant communities by updating our sanctuary city policy so that we're banning city employees from using city funds to cooperate with ICE. And I also co-sponsored with Jevonko Beckles a deport ICE resolution that cut contracts with companies that were going to send information to ICE as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eduardo Martinez. I'm currently on the Richmond City Council in my fourth year, running for reelection. I'm a retired school teacher. I taught at Downer Elementary and Sheldon Elementary for 18 years. Before that, I worked at Juvie Hall for the Alameda County, and I helped set up a seventh, eighth grade self-contained classroom for truants, pre-expulsion kids just out of juvie, not ready to make it back into the regular classroom. No? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. So with all of those qualifications, one needs to be articulate, intelligent, able to work with all kinds of people, ready to meet their needs at whatever level their needs need to be met. So I know that the city of Richmond needs so much. For instance, our financial situation is on a shoestring, and we have services that need to be met. We need more police, but the budget isn't there for a police increase. And I'm trying to think outside the box on ways to keep money in Richmond, and one of those things is to start a regional bank. So I've been talking with Berkeley, Oakland, the county of Alameda, and now San Francisco is interested in joining Richmond in creating a regional bank in which all of our city finances would be held in one bank, and the interest would be made by the cities that are part of the banks. So I have many other ideas that I'll share with you, but thank you, and thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Schoenthall. I'm running...
Come on. Turn the light on.
Blessing, I'm back again. So ladies and gentlemen, Dave Schoenthall, running for Richmond City Council 2018. So qualifications, you ask? So most of my adult life, I've spent in business development and customer support, but also before that, I have an AA degree, a BA degree, and an MA degree in speech and communication. So my vocation was teaching. But what I found when I moved back to the Bay Area was that you couldn't really make a lot of money teaching, so I decided to go into sales. And that's where I had been very successful, working in the tech industry, but also about nine years ago, about 12 years ago, we adopted our daughter, brought her to Richmond, and then nine years ago, I started my volunteer career. So I've been very involved in the PTA, raising money for the local schools, for nonprofits, raised over $100,000. From picnic in the Point, it's on October 20th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Judge G. Carroll Park. But most importantly, I listen. I can work with multiple different people and multiple different, from all backgrounds, to listen to what they need. So we've done nine collaborative solutions workshops on things like human trafficking, on business development, on homelessness, and what we've found is people who may be in direct conflict with each other really want to get something done. They may not agree on the solution, but they agree on getting something done. And so when we put those folks in the room, we found that we can get great things done. So I'm leading by example, by being out there in the community, being servant-minded, so not just running for somebody, not just running for a thing, an ideology, but for the people, being a public servant, someone that really, really works with people inside and out and listens to their needs. With that, I'm saying Catch the Wave with Dave, 2018. Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for coming out tonight. I'm Jim Rogers. I live here in the Point. My son, Brooke, is a student, second grade, at our local, excuse me, Washington Elementary School. I'm running on my record. I was on the council for a number of years, and I think I have a record which is unsurpassed in terms of the important issues that affect real people's lives that I've been a part of. Couple examples: the Chevron approval from 2014. Working with Mayor Tom Butt, council member Jael Myrick, with support from Matt Bates, we got the best modernization approval in the history of the United States. I don't care if we're talking about the jobs, the $90 million for community benefits, the $35 million for the Richmond Promise Program, the greenhouse gas protections, pollution, I don't care what you're talking about, I believe it's the strongest one. We took every penny of those on the table, and we got it, and we passed it. The 2008 one, I didn't vote for it. Why? Because Chevron didn't step up the plate. Chevron sent out a hit piece against me, okay? Some people get mad, some people see the world black and white. I figure you've got to deal with the devil. I don't like Chevron, they don't like me, but when we had the opportunity to actually negotiate the best project agreement in the history of the United States, I was there. Put aside my personal differences with Chevron, got it done. Campaign reform. I brought public financing to the city of Richmond. We passed it. Cigarette and alcohol billboards near schools, got rid of them. Not all of them, but got rid of a lot of them. We've had a big decrease historically over the last 10 or 15 years. A lot of reasons for that: citizen involvement, police, whatever. But one reason is that we passed two taxes. I spearheaded both of them. They were both progressive taxes, utility tax and a sales tax. Chevron alone paid about two-thirds of one of them. It got us the money to do the cool stuff we had to do: the better police, more police, the office and neighborhood safety, the job training. So that, to me, is meaningful work. Look forward to talking more about it later, and I appreciate your coming out tonight. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Caesar Zapata. In my experience, I didn't always know, or I didn't always knew I had it. It was my community who pushed me forward because of the leadership that I was giving to my community. I started out becoming president of my HOA, and I've been president of my HOA since I purchased my home when I was 22 years old. I've been president ever since. We had issues at Hilltop, and we were not being heard, so I became the founder and president of the Hilltop District Homeowners and Stakeholders Association. We oversee the $1 million that we have as a budget for Hilltop in the landscaping district. We were trying to figure out where our money was, and the joke around the city is it's everywhere else except where it's supposed to be. That got me even more involved. I also became the founder and president of the Hilltop District Neighborhood Council. Became the founder and president of Richmond Rainbow Pride, Richmond's first and only LGBTQI organization. With everything that I do, and with every single day, the community looks to me, the community looks with me about how we can build a better Richmond. When I see an issue, when I see a concern, I tackle it. A few years ago, 50 community leaders were invited to go and become principal for the day, where you went to different schools within our school district. Out of 50 of us, I seem to be the only one to come out and see an issue in our schools. Our school program in Richmond High School was missing its band. The instruments there were bent, they were old, they were from schools that no longer are. I raised over $100,000, and we now have a band for Richmond High School. And I think that's my time. Thank you.
My name is Eleanor Thompson, and I've lived in the city of Richmond for over 50 years. And I'm running for city council because I would like to be a voice for the people. I know that when I moved into the Iron Triangle, I lived over there for 30 years, and we had to fight for everything we wanted from the city. We needed a stop sign because we had almost accidents every day on that corner. We had a man to get killed, and that's when we went down and we fought for a stop sign. And council member Mac Millen at that time, people were saying, "No, they don't need a stop sign." But he said, "The people know what they need." So we, as serving the people, we know if the people come to us, they know what they need. We don't know what they need. Government can't decide what a person needs in their community, and I would like to be that voice. I have served in the city of Richmond for over 50 years, as I said. As a substitute teacher in the Richmond Unified School District, I was elected as the representative for the Democratic Party for West County. I served on the Police Commission, the Anti-Drug Task Force for the city of Richmond. I also served on those policymaking committees with Chief Lansdowne when he was our chief of police. And we made the policy of the community policing, so I served on that committee also. I just want you to vote for me in November so that the people in Richmond can have a voice, and I want to listen to the people. I don't want to do what I want to do once on the council, but I want to do what the people want us to do, if that is something that is needed. We will evaluate. We just won't do, but we will evaluate to make sure that that is something that's needed when they come to us and ask us. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. You know, I'm where I am because so many people have helped me: friends, strangers, and I don't just mean ordinary kindness of strangers. These were young women, my classmates, who would read to me four hours straight, six hours straight, week after week after week. So helping strangers has been very important in my life as a blind person. That is why I volunteered as a writer coach with Richmond High, have done it for the last five years. That is why I volunteered as a math tutor at the literacy for every adult program. That is why I volunteered with Richmond Trees. We've planted over 500 trees in this city. That is why I serve on the Crime Prevention Board. That is why I'm running for city council. So that is the heart I will bring to city council. I also have some skills. I have a law degree from Berkeley, and I'm a software engineer, so I understand numbers really well. That is why I can understand our complex debt profile. That is why these Bay Times said that I was by far the most financially astute member on the council. And we are going to face major challenges coming down the road because purse is going to have a major step up over the next three years. We have to issue a big bond in five years. If our finances are not good, we are simply going to be paying a tremendous interest rate and paying for it with cuts in services. I'm the person who really studies the issues in detail, so I want to make sure that the Richmond Promise Program is actually used by the 1,000 students for which it was budgeted, not by the 300 that are using it now. So I hope, that is why you'll vote for me.
Vote for me for chairing the Democratic Council.
Well, good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing today? That's always great. Well, my name is Demliss Johnson III, and I'm running for Richmond City Council. I was born here in the city of Richmond at Brookside Hospital, when it was called Brookside Hospital. My family goes back four generations here in the city of Richmond, working at the Kaiser Shipyard. My grandfather even owned the Savoy nightclub in North Richmond. And so I'm here in the city of Richmond, running. I work as a school community outreach worker at The Richmond High School, where I work to coordinate both city and district services to help eliminate both academic, social, and economic barriers that stand in the way of student and family success. As I always say, a kid can't think if they're hungry, they can't read if they don't have lights, and you can't do homework if you don't have a home. So at Richmond High School, I work to eliminate all of those issues, so when a kid comes to school, the only thing they have to worry about is getting their education. In addition to that, I serve as the chair of the Economic Development Commission, and I serve on the Citizens Police Review Commission, in addition to the Richmond Museum Association and the Silesian Boys and Girls Club, Board of Directors. If elected on November 6, I will bring my homegrown experience to the council to help solve some of the unique issues that we have here in the city of Richmond. It is from my experience as a youth, growing up in the city of Richmond and going through Richmond schools and coming out on the other side, that I plan to bring that experience to Richmond City Council to help move our city forward without leaving anyone behind. Thank you so much for your time.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Virginia Ramirez, and I go by Vicky. I have lived in Richmond for the past 20 years and attended the public schools here. Sorry. In 2008, I received a full-ride scholarship to UC Berkeley, and in 2012, I received a BA in social welfare. I chose this career because I generally care for the welfare of others. I see people as complex human beings and understand that there's a lot of factors involved when you, to better our lives. In order to better our lives, we need to look at all these factors. Sorry, it's my first time. I see that people who step over other people because of greed forget that they are mortal. When I see that happening, I see that people feel that they're immortal. We have to remember that we're mortal, and we want to leave a better future for those that come after us. I see people as people and not as prophets. My qualifications are, I don't really have any, but I do the work. I'm committed. For example, I started looking at city council meetings since 2014, and going through the Corky Bousset ones were really, really hard, but I did it. I am involved with ACE. That's a community organization that passed rent control and just calls for evictions because, again, I see people as people and not as prophets, and I want to give back to my community. That's why I'm running for Richmond City Council, and thank you.
So for the next question, we have another two-minute question. The first respondent, selected at random, is Ada. Do you think rent control in Richmond has been a success? Did you turn your... Do you think rent control in Richmond has been a success? If you had the authority, would you repeal it, fix it, or leave it as is? If you would fix it, how?
Hello. Yes, I do think that rent control has been a success. It's helped over 1,000 families just in this past year. As far as fix it, I think that one of the things that we can do now is we can support Proposition 10 to repeal Costa-Hawkins so that we can expand rent control, and we can expand protections for homeowners so they can make a fair profit. As far as leave it alone, I think that if voters would like to change some aspects of rent control, I think that we could definitely do that. But I think right now, I really appreciate the work that the Rent Board has done. They've supported a lot of seniors, a lot of low-income folks. They've also provided a lot of education and capacity building for landlords to know what their rights and responsibilities are. And I think having that board as a resource for community members allows a fair return for landlords and a place to go when there's issues such as harassment or large rent increases that are making many of our community members seek different types of housing outside of Richmond. And so I think if we want to keep people in Richmond who have lived here for generations, a deeper investment in that education and the rent control program is where we need to go. Thank you.
I will have to echo what Ada Brusino said about rent control being a success. I think one of the issues is that there are so many factors involved, not just rent control, but also population migration. In fact, I went to an A-BAG meeting, and they showed how people from out of state are moving to the peninsula in San Francisco, displacing, and when I say people from out of state, I'm talking about people from out of state with big pockets. So they're able to come into San Francisco, the peninsula, buy up properties at prices that the people who live there can't afford driving up the prices of properties. And so those people migrate to Oakland, and then, because they have bigger pockets than the people in Oakland, those people in Oakland have to move further west. And we've already seen people in Richmond migrating to Fairfield, migrating to Antioch, and Martinez, and Pittsburgh. And this is way before rent control was here. So it's not as if rent control is causing mass migration. That was already here. But rent control has kept a lot of people in their homes, and that's what we want. We want to make sure that the people who built up the capital, which is Richmond now, get to engage and reap the harvest of their years of being here. There are lots of things, well, for instance, if I could do things differently, I would have hoped that the homeowners association, or whoever they was, that caused us to pull back the rent control, hadn't have done that, because if it had have been in our hands, we would have been able to make the changes necessary.
Blessing, so I believe that rent control actually exacerbates the affordability crisis that we currently have. We need more housing. The thing that we don't talk about in this crisis that we're in is we don't talk about over the last 10 years, your, our wages have gone down by 9.7%. So what we need is to have a lift up of fundamental wages. So somebody who's working at McDonald's gets a fair living wage, they're able to be unionized. That's the backbone of American society, flat out, is to have a good-paying job so that they can buy a house, they can lend, they can take care of their family, their kids can go to school. That's the American dream. What we have right now is an exacerbation of the affordability crisis. The haves and have-nots have gotten greater. That, if we look at San Francisco and we look at New York, we will see that. It is clear as day. The thing that I would have loved to see is a collaborative solutions workshop with the property owners, of which 75% of the property owners in Richmond are small mom-and-pop property owners. They were called greedy. They were called greedy landlords. Instead, dividing us, they should have brought us together, sat down at the table, and said, "What could we do constructively to help with this affordability crisis?" Right? So instead, maybe they would have come to the table, the property owners would have said, "Hey, we would rather put in $5 million to help out with the affordability crisis" instead of having a bureaucracy that actually pushes the affordability onto the property owners now. Many of them, who I see in the audience right now, are having to deal with, "Can I afford to take care of this property so I can rent it versus selling it, which will increase the prices?" So let's get together, find solutions, so that we can help out everybody. Thank you very much.
I think that, first off, we have to remember, in the long run, rent control is not going to solve the problem. You can argue it's good, you can argue it's bad. I think in certain cases, it is justified, but let's keep our eye on the ball. In the long term, if you don't have new construction, the costs will go up. And if you push the rates down low enough, then the landlords, the owners, will do what they did in Berkeley. They sold out, and they got out of the whole business of being a landlord, which, of course, defeats the whole point of it. I spend a lot of time talking to people I know who are affordable housing developers, and they're not bugged about the idea that tenants shouldn't have to live in fear of a 10% or 20% or 30% rent increase. They can hang with the idea that rents should be adjusted to inflation. But where they have problems with it is some of the other provisions. For instance, just cause. Sounds great. You have to have just cause to evict a tenant. In practice, what it means is it makes it very, very difficult for a landlord to get rid of the drug dealer, get rid of the person who's running a prostitution ring, whatever it is. And that scares them. So I think what we need to do with rent control is respond to the legitimate need of people who want to be able to plan their lives, they want to be able to know that they can live somewhere without having the specter of a 30% rent increase. Protect those people. But there's a number of other things, including the huge multimillion-dollar bureaucracy, including just cause, that we don't need. And my record is one of bringing people together, and if we had done this intelligently, we would have, as a council, and I wasn't on the council at the time, we would have been able to sit down, bring different people with different ideas together, and come up with a plan that worked for everybody. Instead, we had a rather draconian initiative because people were frustrated and nothing was happening. Thank you.
I ought to make the joke that unless we're going to build the wall around Richmond, unless we're going to stop having strict, bad kids, and unless all of your kids are going to live at home with you forever, we need to build more housing. I was very lucky to be able to purchase my home as we aged 22, because my parents still believe you must buy a home. That is an investment towards my future, my family's future. When rent control passed, I told those guys, "Father, say, 'Cesar, what do I do now?'" And I said, "You asked me during the election where I was with Measure L, and I told you to not vote for it because there was a lot of issues with it. Now you voted for it without reading what it was actually doing. Now it has helped some people, I will not deny that, but there's a larger group that is left in nimbo: the small businesses that have, that have been living in Richmond for a long time. They want to make a little bit of money because that's their investment, that is their retirement. They only have one property, and they want to be able to live out of it for their last days, and they're making it very difficult." The other thing that I will do is making sure that we can get those people that are on that board elected, because how are we going to hold them accountable if they're not being elected? How are we going to make sure that all that money they're taking from the general fund is being used properly? We have no way of controlling it. We have no way of saying how it's going to be used, and if it's actually being used for the individuals that need it the most. There was one person who was happy that rent control passed, and she said, you know, "I voted for it, my apartment is now rent-controlled," and she's subleased. That made her the landlord. The person there is racist and has threatened her, and she can't evict.
I agree with the rent control as it is, the policy that has been passed, I agree with that. But I don't know about repealing Prop 10. I don't know because I haven't studied that enough to know. I know that I own properties, and when I got ready to sell that four-plex, no one wanted to buy it because they couldn't raise the rent. So I don't know what effect it would have on landlords if you repeal Prop 10, and I don't know what effect it would have on rent. don't know what effect it would have on renters. So I support rent control as it is.
So first of all, the point was the only place where rent control did not win. So thank you for that. Now, has rent control been effective? Now, the fact of the matter is rents around the Bay Area pretty much flatlined in 2016. This is the only place where they were going up, and they were going up in anticipation of rent control. So there's no way that we can claim that it has worked because there simply hasn't been the time to gather the evidence. Now, so we have to base it based on the experience of other cities and what has been that experience. You know, the four strict rent control cities in the Bay Area until that point, East Palo Alto, San Francisco, Berkeley, and Oakland, were among the five most segregated cities in the Bay Area. Okay? According to the San Francisco Rent Board, when it came to market rate housing, whites got 54%, non-whites got 46%. When it came to rent control housing, whites got 72%, non-whites had only 28%. Okay, now, as a lawyer, I know that something like that is actually unconstitutional because it discriminates based on race. That is the effect that it has. So obviously, as a lawyer, I can support it. Now, in terms of, do you want to fix it? It can't be fixed because it was passed. So the only option we have is repeal and replace. So that is what I support. Yes, the just cause eviction needs to be modified. I suggested that we can keep just cause, but say that you can get an exemption from just cause if you offer it on the same terms to the next renter. Again, I've supported the San Leandro model because in San Leandro, rates went up by 80% when during the same period of 17 years, in Oakland, they went up by 240%. So we need something that works for the renters, that works for the landlords, and we can come together and figure out something that really works.
Well, I do believe that there has been some success with the rent control in Richmond. The retirement residence area is a good example. But overall, I do think that we need to fix our rent control here in the city of Richmond. Because right now, a majority of the property owners in the city of Richmond that's shouldering the burden are our small-time property owners. In addition to that, most of them are made up of people of color and women, and also retired individuals who bought the property and rented it out so they can supplement their retirement checks or have something to pass on to their kids. We can't punish people with high fines and levy a bunch of taxes on them towards where they can maintain the property. I'm looking at an individual now who literally, when retired, said that she was going to help out the current housing stock by renting out an apartment to an individual. And because she has to deal with so many fees, she can't keep it up. And now she's going to have to sell that apartment. And I disagree wholeheartedly with the notion that it wasn't rent control that was causing this mass displacement to East County. I know the families that have been forced out because homes have been sold, because fourplexes and duplexes have been sold, because the people didn't want to deal with the rent control taxes and fees. And now those families couldn't find anywhere to live in Richmond, they had to move to East County. Those are long-term Richmond residents, people who have been here for generations, being pushed out because property owners can't keep up with the fines and the fees. In addition to that, I will see to it, I would fix also the just cause for eviction. We have a lot of individuals who are, it is a great thing, but then also we have people who are taking advantage of it, and so we do need to plug up those holes. Nothing's perfect. No legislation is perfect. But we can't, one thing we can't be afraid to do is call out those imperfections and go after it and fix it. We cannot act as if all legislation that is passed is infallible because we are human beings. Thank you.
Hi. So no one woke up one day and was like, let's stick it to the man and let's control rents because we feel like it. They were going through really hardships. You know, we represent everyone in Richmond, not just those that can afford high rent increases. I want you guys to, you know, close your eyes for a few seconds and think of your housing being doubled from one night to the other, and your income is not catching up, and you can't do anything about it. These people were here, you know, for what we did, rent control for just cause for eviction. It was because people were coming to us saying, I have high rent increases, I don't know what to do. Even the nurse association was like, it's a cycle. The nurses were out there advocating for them because they're like, they come and they're stressed out, they can't afford rent, they have two jobs, and they can't pay for medical expenses, and they're back at it again. It's a cycle, it's a vicious cycle. And we know that we're doing the right thing, it's not perfect, but it can be worked on. I know there was rent control years ago and, you know, they got rid of it, but it was because it was needed at that time, just as it's needed at this time right now when the wages are not catching up and they are not going to catch up. And I know people talk about mom and pop landlords, there is a fair, what is it? Oh my God, I can't remember. Fair, what is it? Fair just, what is it? If you're not, if you don't have, if you're not making a fair share return on your investment, you can go to the rent board and they allow you to increase it. So there are options, we did think about that. And, you know, it's not perfect, but I'm the one, I want to be there for people who, you know, are, who say we need help. I live in Richmond and I'm poor and I need help. Not just say, oh, you're too poor, get out of here. We were raised here, we don't want, we don't want to leave. This is what makes us. And that's why I support rent control and just cause for eviction.
That was an ill-conceived measure that was placed on a ballot by the RPA. When you want to do something, you have to collectively bring all of the parties to the table, sit down and work out and negotiate, and you will come up with a much better measure of rent control. Rent control is all about supply and demand. When the demand is greater than the supply, you know as well as anyone else, the prices go up. No one ever considered the little people in this, the seniors, people who had worked all their lives to build a nest egg and provide some housing for a supplement in our income, small pensions, social security, which is hardly anything. But this is an opportunity for many seniors and others to benefit. But as it turns out, it's a grab, it was an emotional issue. People who felt that they were not able to pay or couldn't keep up with the rent increases, they voted their pocketbooks. The one unfortunate thing is that we're stuck with it. And unless there's that effort to come back and revisit it, we're going to be with it for the last, for the next several years. No one's looked at what it's cost, $2.4 million for the rent control. They're not bringing in $2.4 million, it's about $1 million. So the city taxpayers are subsidizing that rent control. It's not fair.
Okay, thank you candidates. The next question is going to be our first lightning round question. What we're looking for is a one-word answer. This November on the ballot, Proposition 10, which will repeal Costa-Hawkins, if approved, is on the ballot. There are two boxes you can vote, you can vote yes or you can vote no. And we're looking for one of those answers from you guys tonight. The question is, do you support the repeal of Costa-Hawkins? Yes or no? The first answer is going to Cesar.
Do you support the repeal of Costa-Hawkins? Yes or no?
No.
No.
No, and if you say yes...
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
For your audience's information, Costa-Hawkins is a state law that limits cities' right to put rent control on new construction and a couple other things, single-family homes. If it is repealed, it would end all restrictions to a city's ability to put rent control on the ballot. In Richmond in particular, it would bring rent control into single-family homes, condominiums, and new construction immediately, so. You don't have to take my word for that, it's not a debate, we're not going to, we don't have time to get back and forth for that. It is a state law that if passed would allow cities to put rent control on new construction, single-family homes, and condominiums, so.
If they want it.
It would allow them to, right.
Hopefully that'll be the most confusing question we have tonight. Hopefully it'll be simpler from here out. All right. The next question is actually a question in two parts. You'll get 60 seconds for the first part, we'll go through all the candidates, and then we'll come back for the second part. You may be able to guess what the second part might be. Leave that to you. The first question is, what does a city need to spend more money on? And our candidate who's been selected to answer first is Demless.
I believe our city needs to spend more money on public safety. And in my opinion, public safety, in addition to reducing gun violence and increasing community policing, is about bringing in more mental and traumatic health services for our residents. The only way we can all move forward is if we're all moving forward from a healthy and holistic standpoint. We can't leave some, we can't leave some of our residents on the wayside suffering from mental and traumatic stress while others are moving forward and can live happy and holistic lives. I think one thing we should do is try to provide more resources for our communities so that way they can help out those individuals who are suffering from mental and traumatic stress. Thank you.
I believe the city should spend more money on the welfare of the city, maintain the roads, keep the parks clean, what did I write here? Cut the weeds. Yeah, the welfare of the city. Pay attention to those buildings that have been vacant for like the past 30 years and continue to beautify the city with the arts that they have been incorporating. I love those trash cans, have you got any of them? They're beautiful. Thank you.
Without a doubt, as a retired probation officer with Alameda County, public safety has to be the number one priority. If you don't have a safe city, no one is going to come into this city with developments, with businesses, which is the hardcore of the tax revenue that we have to get to take care and afford the various services for this city. Safety. You don't want to live in a community like we had about eight years ago where we were considered the most unsafe city in the nation. Gun violence, murder after murder, burglaries after burglaries, auto thefts. You want to return to that, then put your money in the parks, in the recreation, because you're not going to get the safety that you deserve. Public safety, police, number one.
I would like us to invest in more community-based programs. So this is community healing and prevention to get us on the right track. If the youth have opportunities and things to do, they are going to be excited to live here, give back, grow, and continue building our community. So that looks like more art, libraries with better services, increasing after-school programs and activities, doing a lot of economic development so that we have, you know, teens like to go out, so we have a place to spend their funds and they can spend it right here in the city. And I think that more than anything, that deep investment in our young people is going to get them excited about our history, about our culture, and that's going to bring a lot of people to come and visit and also spend funds in Richmond as well. Thank you.
I think the voters of Richmond have told us what they want their money spent on, and that is on our youth. We need more youth finances, helping sports, helping after-school activities, helping before-school activities, and that is where I would have our money go to. And for services, for the libraries and for abatement, more city services like that. So I also recognize that we have a policing program. I've said this before, that Berkeley, Richmond have the same population, Richmond has three times the land area that Berkeley does, even though Berkeley has more police officers and a lower police pay budget. So if we want to do the kind of community policing, we need more police. So the question is, you know, where does that line fall?
So before we start to spend more money on wonderful things that we all want and deserve, we should figure out what we're spending our money on. We need to do an efficiency report. This came out of a collaborative solutions workshop. One of the members said, hey, look, I'd like to know what we're spending our money on and what we're getting for that money. Secondarily, we've heard it before this evening, and we say it every single, on every single survey, we need this city to be safe. It needs to be safe for our current residents to send their kids to school, and it needs to be safe for people who are coming in who want to live here and want to build businesses. Second, third, I think that we should have business improvement districts, just like we have on McDonald Avenue. The Main Street Initiative, let's put one in Point Richmond, let's put one on the shops at Hilltop, let's put one on 23rd Street, and really fire up the economic engine of this city so that we can have the vital resources that we need to grow and thrive. With that, I'm fired up.
I think we've heard a really good explanation about a number of the needs that Richmond has, and I won't repeat that. What I want to talk about though, is that if you don't have money, it's politicians flapping our gums. Whether you care about libraries to get kids off the street, whether you want police, whether you want parks, whether you want to fix potholes, whatever, if you don't have the money there, we're just talking, we're not doing. I'm the one with the record of successfully spearheading two different initiatives, sales tax, utility tax, and the renewal of the sales tax in 2014. What they have in common is that unlike tax on real estate, which hit a lot of Richmond residents hard, these are mainly paid for by big businesses, by people who come in from out of town, and by very wealthy people. These are progressive taxes, and that's why they're good policy, and that's why they passed. So don't just think about what you'd like to have, think about who can get you the money in a way that is fair to our residents and that makes the people who take advantage of our city in terms of visiting here, in terms of running a profitable business, make those people pay their fair share.
All right, yes, if you want to invest, if we want to make more money, we have to invest our money where we're going to make more money. In the city of over 100,000, we have one person over our economic development. The city of San Pablo has about 20,000, and they have six people. That is why our small businesses and every business is leaving our city. The callback time, if you are a small business and you want to know how to get into Richmond to give us your money into our city that we need because we have a $9 million deficit, callback time, a few weeks, maybe a month. Walnut Creek, 24 hours. El Torito, same day. San Pablo, one to two days. This comes from business owners who called me to ask me, can I help them get in? And then they left, because we couldn't get a call back. Economic opportunities is what we need. We need people that are gonna answer the phone, so we can take that money, so we can fix the roads, so we can work with our kids, so we can fix our parks. Everything else everybody said, we need money.
All the communities in Richmond, they're all different. In our communities, we have drive-by shootings, so we're most likely, safety would be our first priority. Most likely, in other communities, even though you may not have the drive-by shootings, but you have the break-ins, so most likely, your wants and needs would be safety, because we don't want people breaking in our homes. And we not only have the youth, but the youth are the ones that we need to be targeting, because they are the ones that's committed most of the crimes in Richmond. And also, the homeless, we have homeless. If we ride them down McDonald and other streets, we'll see that we're starting to get homeless camp, starting to build up. So we need to watch and check on all of these things that's going on in the city of Richmond. The homeless needs housing, and I know that when we have homeless, that's because we don't have enough houses, we don't have enough homes for them to live in. Thank you.
Well, I wish the question was, what can we spend our money on? Because then the answer would have been simple, really nothing, because we are gonna face really steep financial challenges, particularly the next three years. Now to say like, Jim's the only person in my life whom I've heard of referring to sales tax as a progressive tax. But, you know, I do agree with him that without the money, we are just flapping our wings. So police constitutes the majority of our budget, because it is the top priority. But given that we can't spend our way out of the problem, what can we do? And I really suggest that we volunteer, we work with our youth. You know, the most critical period is boys between the ages of 12 and 17. If they go astray, they become criminals, otherwise, they can realize their full potential. Be mentors, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The second part of this question is a follow-up. It's the more difficult question, which is, we heard about what you'd like to spend more money on. The next question is, what would you cut to pay for it? Now, we're gonna go down the same line we did before. We're gonna start with Demless. You mentioned public safety, community policing, and health. Now, what would you do to either raise that money or make cuts?
Can you hear me now? Good. So I'm glad you tacked that last part on, because what I would do in order to raise money to pay for these things is by recruiting new businesses to come to Richmond to contribute to our business tax, as well as helping small businesses grow, so that way, they can also contribute. There's three ways that the city of Richmond makes money. As Jim said, if we don't have the money, we can't do anything. So if we're not, the property taxes, business taxes, and utility taxes. And without raising your property taxes, because I feel as though the school district has done a number on those, we can go ahead and start looking at some of the business taxes, and without raising taxes on current and existing businesses, recruiting more businesses to come to the city of Richmond, and helping establish new ones, our growing established ones here, so that way, they can contribute more to our business tax revenue, and we can provide more public safety and mental and traumatic stress recovery, so that way, they can go to the parks, and they can be in our classes with a sound and healthy mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Virginia? Virginia, you mentioned the welfare of the city, roads, and parks. What would you cut, or how would you raise funds to pay for that?
Hello? I wouldn't cut any funds from the city. Instead, I would focus on asking the lobbyists at the state level to advocate for us and apply for grants. And I would also think outside the box. I would reach out to probably the youth. They usually have some interesting ideas that they're kinda like the ones who think outside the box. We're kinda like ingrained in our beliefs, and I would see what they have to say and kinda implement some of those things to the city council.
Thank you. And Nat, you mentioned public safety as your number-one priority. What would you cut to pay for it?
That was a day in which collectively, we used to go to Washington DC and the state and get funds, but you know, the climate up there in California, we get nothing today. One of the things that I've observed over the 40 years that I've been on that city council, we have never, never once did an independent audit of the entire staff. There's a need, and I think we can find some ways, if we had the independent audit, we can look at every job in that city, in terms of whether the needs, the priorities, and so forth. And we could cut. The city staff represents about 75% of our budget, just personnel, benefits, and salaries. And that's about the only area. Everything else is all the hard-reading, whether it's electricity, the cars, that's automatic. We can't do anything about that. The only place you can cut is personnel.
Ada, you had listed community-based programs, youth programs, and economic development.
Luckily, in order to find what was known as Measure Z and K that recently passed, which is going to start a Department of Children and Families in the city, we're out here trying to get Measure H passed, which is a real estate luxury tax, so it affects maybe 1% of folks in Richmond. It doesn't affect most folks, but that will raise enough funds for us to be able to divert those programs and have the youth decide what it is that they feel would help them the best. Some of the programs that I hope we will be able to implement with those funds include LGBT-specific strategies. I'm also very excited that we can bring in different industries. We can do more research and development in cannabis to bring in more fees and revenue into the city. I think that one of the most important things that we can do is help our small businesses grow by making it easier for them to get KIVA funds, matching funds, facade improvement funding, so that they're able to increase their revenue and sales in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Eduardo, you had mentioned youth programs and services such as libraries and abatement.
Yes. Ada mentioned H, and I'm mentioning Measure T. T is a tax, or rather, a fee on empty or vacant houses, lots. Just today, I went around Richmond photographing empty lots that needed abatement. So most of these lots are from outside owners. They don't even live in the city of Richmond. Some of them live across the country. So we need to make them responsible for ownership of the properties that they have, and we can do that with Measure T. So that would raise money for abatement and to deal with the homeless. We also have a lot of consultants being used by the city. I believe that we could do with many, with much less consultation in running our government, so that would be where I would do a cutting.
Dave, you had mentioned more focused on efficiency, which isn't necessarily in expense and public safety.
Thank you for that question. I go back to what I had mentioned before. We have to first understand how much we're spending on the various programs that we have in place, right? The people that are working at our city are working hard, and they haven't received a cost-of-living adjustment in five years. They've had the budget saddled on their back for those, that time. So as public servants, we need to think about, not just about taxing people, but how to drive revenue in a positive and incentive sort of matter. The first thing I would cut, the rent, the rent control. I'd save us $3 million right there, right? So think about this. We have to think about it as a business, so we have to understand how much we're spending in order to find out how much we're going to make, because we can't build businesses unless it's a safe city. So with that, I turn it over to Jim.
Thank you. I served on the city council when we had huge deficits, and I favored across-the-board cuts with rare exceptions. Police, I didn't want cut. Pottery repair funds, I didn't want cut. But what we need to look at is, how do we avoid getting there in the first place? Because whatever you cut, parks, library, police, fire, whatever it is, it's gonna hurt. It's gonna be very painful. When we have gone out to the voters with a plan, which is progressive, that says, whether it's sales taxes or utility taxes, that says that other folks from out of town, richer folks, businesses will pay their fair share, the voters have responded. And Vinay's right. In general, in most cities, in most cities, the sales tax is not a progressive tax. But in Richmond, we have huge, big box. We have Costco, we have Walmart, we have all the very, very expensive, high-end car dealerships. So in Richmond, there's such a high percentage of the sales coming into it, that it does become a tax, which is good for our folks here in Richmond. Thank you.
And Caesar, you had mentioned that...
I mentioned the what? Economic, all right. I was like, what? So as president and founder of the Hilltop District Homeowners and Stakeholders Association, overseeing that just $1 million budget at Hilltop, we instituted a timesheet system. Before, timesheets by the employees up there in the landscaping district were on paper. I like data. Paper doesn't give me a lot of data unless someone's adding them all up. When we instituted an electronic system, where you can wanna report with your phone on the computer, we realized we were bleeding $80,000 a year. And this is when the city was looking to make cuts. We were bleeding $80,000 in commute time. The employees going from the Hilltop District all the way down to downtown to pick up their tools, to go all the way back up to work, and the ones that were done, they had to come back all the way down and drop off their tools, and then go back all the way again. We were wasting $80,000. So what did we do? We got them a courtyard for $10,000 at Hilltop. You need to do some smart thinking. You gotta think outside the box. You gotta be innovative. You have to have data. You gotta talk to them. You gotta see how you're gonna move this forward. Thank you.
And Eleanor, you had mentioned public safety and homelessness.
Public safety. I think that we should fully staff our police department, for one, because we're lacking the full staff of our police department. And homeless, I think that we should find money to give the homeless jobs. The young mayor, who's mayor of Stockton, I was watching his program, and he created jobs for the homeless to get them off the street. They can clean up around where their camps are and do things like that, and go out to the city and work. So we should create jobs. He said there's no money, but when the council need money for something, I did. So I said we should find money to support the homeless in the city of Richmond.
And Vinay, you had answered, don't spend any more money, but can you give us an idea of how you would make cuts or raise additional funds?
Well, you know, I do wanna point out that in the last two years, we have actually reduced our full-time staff. The police have gone down by almost 15, and yet, our budget went up by $20 million. And that is because of the purse step-up. So yes, you know, we do have to, like, even if we reduce services, we still have to figure out, I mean, we will have to make cuts, essentially. So what I would suggest is what Nat Bates suggested, we do need a full audit. We really need a full audit to figure out if there's any fat. And when people go to, you know, when council members go to you folks asking for higher taxes, I really think that we are being irresponsible when we just say, oh, you know what? Trust us. We are doing a really great job. We really need this money. No, you know what? We should not be asking you to just trust us, that we are doing a good job. We should do the full audit to show you transparently that, yes, this is, you do actually need it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is another lightning round question. Again, this is essentially a one-word answer we're looking for. You'll hear, you'll hear. Okay. So the question is, do you support using the third lane on the westbound Richmond-San Rafael Bridge for traffic or for pedestrian bike trail? The first candidate selected is Eleanor.
I'm not sure.
Traffic. I support keeping it for traffic.
I don't know.
When I look out and I see the cars stacked all the way back... Traffic, no.
Bike, pedestrian.
Jeez. I'll get back to you on that.
The third lane. I would set it up, have both uses done at different times.
A mix.
Okay, so the next question is gonna be a one-minute response time. The question is, and we're gonna start with Vinay over here at this end of the table. The question is, what are the biggest barriers to bringing business to Richmond, and what can the city council do about them?
So one of the biggest barriers is, and this is something that was reported by business folks in Mayor Bart's survey, they said unpredictable city council. So we need to have a city council that has, that welcomes businesses. We also really need to make sure that if Prop 10 passes, we do not extend it to new construction, because if we do that, Hilltop may never be built. If it is not built, the city will lose 10 to 15 million dollars in taxes per year, and we will have to look for close to 100 full-time cuts. So those are the kinds of things that we need to do. We need to make sure that we understand that businesses are going to be what keeps services going. Residential property taxes, folks, constitute 15% of your budget. Thank you.
So in addition to having a more business-friendly council, as the chair of the Economic Development Commission, when we were going around trying to get more businesses here in the city of Richmond, and even trying to get pop-ups started, one of the biggest issues that everyone was telling us that they had was our fee structure. The fee structure in the planning department is antiquated, and it's not keeping up with the current times, and a lot of individuals, and then some of the fees that they're paying, they're not receiving the services behind those fees. So some people are paying, some people are paying a fire inspection fee, and the fire, and the fire inspector never comes out. They just tell us, well, you send us your results. And so you're literally paying for them not to work. And so a lot of individuals will choose not to come to Richmond because of the way our fee structure and the way our business, our amenability to businesses is not that great. So yeah, I would say our fee structure needs to be completely revisited.
Hi. I am not too well-informed on the barriers of businesses, but I am happy to hear from anyone that wants to reach out to me and educate me more on it, so that I can help you. What I would ask the city council to do is to be more proactively, to more... What I would ask the city council to do is to be more proactively, to recruit businesses more proactively. Go out there and tell them why they should come to Richmond, and, yeah, just be proactive. Thank you.
Negative. This from the city council, from the staff, is stagnating and putting this city in quicksand. There's not the friendly atmosphere at City Hall. People go in for permits, bureaucratic. I just was at a function a few days ago, yesterday in fact. Golden Gate Meet, it took them almost three years to get their permit. That's ridiculous. There need to be a Quick Stop Center where you can go in and you can get permits quickly and get on with building this city and relocating individuals in this city. That is not happening at City Halls. Too much bureaucratic favoritism, or whatever you wanna call it. So, the council need to be, show some respect, and be a business-friendly city to all of the businesses that we have in our city and those that wanna relocate in our city.
One of the biggest barriers in California to bringing businesses to cities is that we need to bring socially conscious businesses. Not any business can come to Richmond. We want the workers to be hired from Richmond. We want the workers to get fair wages. We want them to have access to leave if they need it. What I'm committed to is creating a concierge service so that we're able to streamline the processes for any businesses that wanna come that we feel we can partner with. The second thing I wanna do that I'm currently working on is to partner with local universities to provide us with marketing plans based on what lots are vacant, what business opportunities they feel could be most beneficial to our commercial corridors. Thank you.
I think the problem has already been identified. And the problem is that we need a business-friendly staff and a business-friendly planning department. We do need to revamp our planning department so that when businesses come in, they don't have all that runaround that they get now. We also need to have a more proactive business outreach. I go to the Bay, East Bay Economic Association meetings, and I also reach out to developers and I reach out to businesses, and I tell them what they can find here in Richmond. And we need the planning department to do that. Instead of putting out a fishing line and waiting for a bite, we need to go out there and bring in those fish with a net. So, a more aggressive, proactive planning and business department.
Having been a business owner myself and have worked with several businesses, including the one that we're sitting in this evening, our hats off. Let's give him a hand. East Brother Beer Company. So what does any, what does any small business want? They want to know that their costs are fixed. They don't want things to be fluctuate. When they go to apply for their permitting, they want to know that the permitting is reasonable in their business plan, so that their investors, that when they go to ask for that money, it's not gonna fluctuate. They also want safety for their employees. So when a major company comes here and their employees go to work, they wanna know that their employees will be safe getting to and from work. They wanna know that there's access to public transportation, so they can get to work on time. And they gotta know that it's gotta be affordable. They gotta know that the landscape for their employees to live and grow must be an affordable place to live. And finally, there must be incentives in order to grow and build. I believe that Richmond has it. Richmond Strong, fired up.
I was a small business owner for about 25 years. I believe I'm the only person who started a business from scratch, grew it to about 20, 25 employees, ran it for about 25 years. So when we are talking about streamlining, it's important that people, not just people who've been on the public side of the equation, but people who've been on the private sector. I have that. Businesses also need to have a city council that's not a laughing stock. You deal with things like the space-based mind control program. Anybody remember that? Remember the inverse condemnation thing, well-intentioned as it was, never saved a home? Costs us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Businesses look at stuff like that, and it drives them crazy. It drives them out of Richmond. Let's have a city council which is not having its eye on extraneous, crazy issues but keeps focused on what we need here in Richmond. Thank you.
Changed the perception of Richmond. I was involved with getting new developers into our city for the mall. And one of them said, "Caesar, we don't go to Richmond. We don't drive through Richmond. We don't stop in Richmond. We don't invest in Richmond." No. So we had coffee in Richmond. I'm persistent. We have to pick up the phone when they call, and we have to make outgoing calls. I am, for as far as I know, the only person that has called every major grocer to come and give us a grocery store. I ran out of the list of the West Coast, so I called East Coast. Said, "Do you wanna start a West Coast store?" And they all said, "No." But they opened one in Pinole. Pinole has four for 25,000 people. We have zero for 100,000 people. So, people are not coming in because we're not putting the call out, and we're not changing that perception.
As most people have already said, a more friendly Richmond. And to not have the fees so high for them to come in and bring their businesses. I know that one group that used to come every year with a concert to the auditorium, but they stopped coming because the fees went up three times what they were paying at first. So they no longer come. So we don't have that anymore. And they would hire quite a few people for that day. And also, we should make it easier for entrepreneurs to be able to get the small business grant. We have some who wanna come and bring businesses, but they have to wait a whole year before they can get that money to be able to open the business. So we need to make it easier so that our young people and our adults who wants to start a business in Richmond will be able to access that small business loan in the city of Richmond.
Thank you. The next question, you will have one minute to respond to. The state has a mandate for new housing construction for all cities in the state. It's included in our general plan. The question is, "Do you support Richmond's housing component of the general plan? And what can the city council do to meet the state mandate for housing?" First question is going to Eduardo.
Yes, I do approve of it, and I believe that Richmond is meeting our requirements. This morning, I went to the Mirror Forest, Senior and Low Income Housing, and it's beautiful. And right next to it is an empty lot, and they're getting ready to put in affordable housing. We have two lots between 23rd and 21st, which is going to have affordable housing. We have another, well, right now, being built is the Bottoms Project, as you all know. And then we have Terminal 1, we have the Bay Walk, we have the Quarry Project. We have, on Central Avenue, another project. We have the projects on 11th Street, which is mixed use. So we do have a lot of housing coming in.
Yeah, absolutely support it, right? We have 1,981 units that are set to come online in the next few years. Of that, there's 260-some-odd affordable housing that's in that mix. We need to build more housing. Kudos that we are building it, but at the same time, when you build, you gotta look out for the people that are around us, right? We need all levels of housing, market rate, luxury, market rate, affordable, low income. We need it all. But we have to look out for the people who are living here right now. Because we don't want to just necessarily displace them just because we're building housing. We have to set those folks that make up the fabric of Richmond and allow them to be part of it. So where do they get to live? We have to be conscious of that. So I believe that we can fundamentally do this through streamlined provisioning, so that we look at what do we need and where do we need it? And throughout Richmond, I believe that we can get this thing done.
I certainly do support the housing plan. I was proud in my years in the council to be part of a very aggressive plan, and we have had some success. I spent as much time as anybody else in working with developers on the picky details, little things that drive them nuts, figuring out where you go, who you talk to, et cetera. When I took my trips, we have a certain $5,000 travel budget. I'd say about 70, 80% of those trips were going out, talking to people who were affordable housing developers and introducing them to Richmond, and saying, "Hey, there's a council member who cares enough about this. Maybe this city has something going for it." We have to make sure, as we do that, that we're doing it intelligently and we're trusting our neighbors. First go around in the Terminal 1 project, city staff said, "Neighbors are just NIMBYs, out to kill it." Wasn't true. At my suggestion and others, we sat down, had a shret, came up with a plan that both the neighborhood and the developers could buy into and could live with. Project didn't go forward for other economic reasons, but that's an example of reaching out and trusting neighbors and not just thinking everybody wants to be a NIMBY.
Yes, I support it, and we need to continue building, right? This is a theme. We have no housing. We need to build more housing. We need to be that beacon for the rest of the Bay Area. We have a lot of land, but we have to use it wisely. Not just build and build crazy wherever. We need to protect our land. We need to protect the community that's already here. Because that is a fear that they have, is if you bring in more housing in that vacant lot, is my property going to be worth more and am I gonna get kicked out? So we need to protect it. We need to make sure that we build, I believe Dave has said, at different levels. We need to, ultimately, just build. We need to bring in more housing. We have a lot of people that are coming in to take the opportunities that the Bay Area is giving. Let's use some of those opportunities as well and have that housing opportunities available to those people that are coming in. Thank you.
Yes, I do support affordable housing. Excuse me. And we do have lots and things that are vacant in Richmond. And as much as I've heard that the council, they are building homes on those lots, or on some of those lots. But it looks like it takes such a long time for people to be able to get into the house. And I don't know if it's because they're selling too high or what it is, but we still have houses that are built, but there's nobody in them. So I think they should put people in the houses and build more houses. Mayor Bud mentioned tiny houses, and I think that is a good idea. When I first heard him say that, I thought it was a good idea at that time, and I still think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
So when I was in city council, I approved the construction of about 450 units of affordable housing. Okay, the housing projects on Central Avenue as well as 11th and 22nd. I also approved hundreds more units of market rate housing. And, you know, rather than spin all these things about what I want to do, which is the same as what all the others want to do, I do want to put some facts out there. Okay, affordable housing is largely made possible by California state credits. That is not an unlimited fund. That fund typically goes to cities that can chip in with their own funds. We don't have that money, so we can get only a limited amount of affordable housing. As far as market rate housing goes, developers tell us, unless we can be guaranteed a rates, rents of at least 2,500 for a two-bedroom apartment, it's not going to pencil out for us. Thank you.
Yes, I support Richmond's housing component of the general plan. And a few things that I feel as though city council can do to help with the state mandate, and that's not only increase, but make sure that our housing stock is diversified. In addition to having high-density transit-centered housing, we should also be looking at building single-family homes, townhouses, condominiums, market rate, luxury apartments, as well as income-based. I know a lot of people like to use the term affordable, but that's relative, depending on where you work. So I prefer to use the term income-based housing, because that's what we need here in the city of Richmond, and we need a council that understands that income levels vary depending on the zip code that you live in in our city, and that your housing needs may be different depending on where you live and what your needs are. Thank you.
Hi, yes, I also support Richmond's housing component of the general plan. I don't wanna take the words from Ada, but I was listening to a city council meeting about a few months ago, and I believe she mentioned that we need to look for investors that believe in affordable housing. And I also agree with that. I think we should look for the investors that actually believe in affordable housing, that understand that housing is a necessity and not a commodity for, only for profit. I don't think that we need to look for investors that we need to bribe. And I believe there are good people out there. Let's look for them. Everyone deserves stable housing, and, sorry, I wrote this down. Everybody deserves stable housing, and I believe in treating others as you wanna be treated. So put yourself in their shoes and think, "Do I want that to be done to me?" Thank you.
Those that followed my career know that, or you should know, that I voted for every housing development in the city of Richmond in the last 40 years. Started with Burt Clausen's property in the Point Marina, the Brickyard Co., where some of you may live, the Toll Brothers site that eventually became the Seac Cliff Estate. All of the properties in the valley. All of the properties at Hilltop with Steve Shot, that beautiful development there. I have been a strong proponent, in spite of individuals accusing many of us on the council of being in the pockets of the developer. Now just think, had we not supported and approved all of those projects, this city housing problem would be much more serious than it is today. So, yes, I do support the housing projects.
Yes, I do support our housing component of the general plan. I think that for us to be able to accomplish the type of numbers that we have in the general plan, we're gonna have to rely on partnerships. Affordable housing is a regional issue, and I'm committed to partnering with Berkeley, Oakland, our partners up in Sao Paulo, and other cities in Contra Costa County, so that we can work together to all meet our goals. More than anything, I wanna advocate for our fair share of county and state funds, because there is funding out there to build affordable housing, especially the way that we have the opportunity to build it. With very high amounts of units near our transit corridors that provide housing for all income levels. I also really wanna invest a little bit deeper in some of our nonprofit housing developers that we have in the area. Partner with us, and when we partner together, our applications are going to look stronger because we're not only doing affordable housing, but we're trying to get us specific to the regions of Richmond to affect those that need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next round is gonna be a lightning round again. We're looking for a yes/no question on this. You're gonna wanna say more, but please keep it to a yes/no question. The question is, "Do you support housing at Point Malati?" Yes or no? And we're gonna start with Virginia. The question is, it's a yes or no question. Do you support housing at Point Malati?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 It's a court-ordered settlement.
Yes, for military and seniors.
Okay, thank you. For those curious, we are gonna be close to wrapping up at 8:00, so you don't have... The next question and all the rest of the time questions will be 30 seconds each. The question is, do you believe the city should abate homeless encampments? Yes or no and why? And we'll start with Jim.
I'm in support of the measure which is on the ballot to tax vacant properties, use the money for homeless services. Aside from that, there are times when some encampments will need to be moved, but we're not solving anything, because they're just going to go to a different place. We need to have some significant money paid for mainly by out-of-city landlords to try to get at the root causes of the homelessness problem.
Yes, but we must provide housing and services for them, because they are our brothers and sisters and friends. They just got down on their luck, so yes, but we have to provide services.
Because like Cecil said, we have to provide housing, and if we abate their camp, then where are they going to go? Somebody said all we're going to do is move them around to somewhere else. So no, I think we should find housing first before we do anything.
So I'm part of a group, and we are trying to work on solutions to the homelessness issue. Right now, we are on a listening tour. We have our own ideas. I think we should try to help people whatever we can.
So I most definitely support the micro pass that John Joya's office has funding for, and I think we should bring those to the city of Richmond, because in addition to providing housing, they will also provide mental health services, drug recovery services, and workforce training for the homeless. And I think that's something that we should be concerned about instead of just outsourcing our problems to different communities.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah. Question is, do you believe the city should abate homeless encampments? Yes or no and why?
I'm sorry, my first language is Spanish. What is another word for abate? Abandon or?
Clean up.
Oh, and do I agree with that?
Do you support it?
Yeah, I mean, that's clean it, but also let them come back in. Actually, I propose another idea. I've been listening to the city council meetings, and they were talking about mobile homes. I think that's a good idea. The temporary mobile homes that allows for like two years and helps them get on their feet. So maybe let's look into that. Thank you.
This is a national problem, not a city problem. We need some cooperation with the state and the federal government. I happen to be in the Louisiana area, and it's amazing after the problem in New Orleans, how many homes and how many mobile homes and everything are available if the state would only just provide them to the homeless people in this community?
No, I do not support the forced movement of our homeless community. And currently, we are only asking folks to leave so that we can do the cleanup for sanitation purposes, and they can come back. More than anything, we have to create a pipeline for people to get the triage services that they need. Being on the street is very traumatic. These folks are dealing with PTSD. So if we want to solve the root of the problem, we have to invest in those direct services from the beginning. And I know that right now, we don't have a lot of funding, and so that's what we're working on. We just appropriated $300,000 of envelope fees for the homeless task force. Thank you.
I do believe in abatement, but not in expulsion. So if you're using the word abatement for driving them out, that doesn't do anything except make them go somewhere else, but they're still going to be there. And we shouldn't reach for false solutions. I looked at the units that John Joya was promoting, and they're very wonderful units. The rental of those units were $1,300. So how many homeless people are going to be able to afford a $1,300 unit?
People experiencing homelessness is not a crime, right? We need to find a laddering effect, so that is, our police department and our abatement crew don't want to have to go out there and push somebody out of the place of the encampment. There are 74 encampments at any given time in this city. We need to find ways to assess their needs, then get them to the next step. Maybe it's a warming station, then it's tiny homes, then it's some housing. Time goes by fast, man, to answer that. But look, we need to fundamentally do the right thing, because people, it should not be a crime to be homeless. Thank you.
All right, it even gets quicker now. So the lightning round question, again, one-word answer. Who do you support for Assembly District 15? Beckles or Wicks? And first question goes to Dave.
I like ice cream. I vote for, I stand, I support Buffy Wicks for Assembly 15.
I also support Buffy Wicks in Assembly District 15.
I support Buffy.
I prefer not to say thank you.
Out of respect for their race, I will not comment on their race.
I support Javanka Beckles.
I have endorsed and supported Buffy.
I support Javanka Beckles.
Full-grown Javanka Beckles. Let's go.
Okay, thank you. The next question has two parts. It's only a 30-second response time, so listen carefully. It's two short answers. What do you feel is more important in driving policy? Expertise and expert advice, or listening directly to the people? The second part is, can you think of a policy better driven by one than the other? And we're going to start with Vinay on this.
Well, so I think the question is slightly confusing, because the second question makes clear that it depends on the context. So expertise would be more the finances of the city. Listening to people would be more development issues, like housing. Thank you.
I feel what's most important is listening to individuals. Most definitely, expertise has their value, but times change. And with the changing of times, so much the individuals who are at the helm of it. I really do believe that policy can be better driven when listening to individuals and when learning from new people. Thank you.
I believe in listening to the people. They live here. They know what they're experiencing, and I don't know what the second part is, but I'm thinking about health in all policies. How, you know, as people, we want health in all policies, and that's one policy that I think about when I think about listening to the people.
I don't think you can distinguish between the two. There are expertise that is provided, that information that you're completely unaware of. And if you ignore history and expertise, statistics, and so forth, especially in the financial world, and you want to make a decision on the basis of what individuals think, a good example is your budget. People want to come in and they ask for everything. Your expertise will tell you, you don't have it and you can't afford it. Now what are you going to do? You come, you listen to both of them.
I believe that people can be experts if they have lived experiences. If we want to solve the homeless issue, we're going to solve it by asking our homeless community what they need, and they will tell us. If we want to end human trafficking in Richmond, we can talk to victims of human trafficking. They will let us know. And then we seek out the experts in data and policy to match up how we're going to get the resources in order to solve these complex issues. Thank you.
I agree with Ada. This seemed like a trick question, because the people are experts. They're experts of their own reality. They're experts of their own needs. So for instance, you wouldn't go to a doctor to build your house, you know? So likewise, you wouldn't go to, you know, you have to ask the right person the right questions. And everyone is experts in their own way, and you need to make sure that everyone has a say.
I believe this question's a false dichotomy. I believe it's both. I believe that we should do, as I've witnessed, a collaborative solutions approach, where we would have a facilitator that would look at, we would have all of our interests in line, and we would want to look at those interests and see if all those interests we could be met by the solution we're looking for. And then we would also seek out advice and expertise to determine if that's the appropriate course of action. We can truly get great things done, we just got to do it together.
I agree, if you feel that it's one or the other, you're doomed to failure. They have to be together. When the schools were about to be closed a few years ago, Kennedy, Grand Alinda, we heard from the community, real simple. So what do we do about it? I led the fight that kept the schools open, and I suggested that the city get money from the school district in order to keep the schools open, and we would get money to fix the roof at the Kennedy Swim Center. We did that not only to keep the schools open, we did it at zero net cost, zero net cost to the city budget. So you need to hear the community. We need to have people that does the experience to make it work after that.
I will never live long enough to know everything, which is why I must learn from others and be able to listen, from those that came before me, from those that are coming after me, from those that are around me, and from those that I wish to be like. So I have to listen to the community in order to grow with them, because this is not just my city, this is our city. So in order to grow together, I have to be able to listen. And that experience comes from listening. I will never have it all for myself.
I believe that the people are expert in their communities, that they know what's going on and what they need there. But I believe both, expertise as the council, you know, they can make decisions, but we have to listen to the people, because first of all, the people elected us, put us in office, and that's why we're there, because they put us there, and we have to listen to them. It doesn't mean that we always have to follow what they say. If we, you know, if you have an idea, they have an idea, we have to use our own expertise. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. This is another 30-second answer. The question is, and the new ferry service is going to be going into service between here and San Francisco in January of next year. The question is, do you think the new ferry service is a good thing or a bad thing for Richmond and why? And we're starting this question with Ada.
I think it will be an advantageous thing if we work with community members who already live here to seek out jobs in San Francisco. It's going to be a subsidized service for the first couple of years to incentivize people to come back and forth. And so I think that we can hold things like a job fair near the ferry in order to attract folks to look into the service and seek high-paying jobs. But I think that we also need to be careful, because these types of services can often lead to the movement of San Franciscans into Richmond. And so I would like us to be wary of that.
I believe the ferry service is a good thing for the city of Richmond. It will increase tourism in the city of Richmond, because it will bring people from San Francisco to the Rosie the Riveter Museum. I would also like to see a water taxi that goes from the Rosie the Riveter Museum over to the Red Oak Victory Ship and the winery there to promote the visitation of two of the major sites in Richmond.
It's an absolutely wonderful thing to have a new ferry coming to Richmond. It has actually attracted businesses, and it's attracted new home development in Richmond because that ferry is there. It will... I see what you're doing. So hey, we're also lessen congestion and traffic to be able to get on the ferry each day. Hey, what a better way to go to work than go by the ferry. So it's a wonderful thing for the city of Richmond and beyond.
The ferry's a wonderful thing. There was a whole lot of different people and a whole lot of different ways that combined to make it happen. One part of that is we got the Marina Bay underpass. If you don't have the Marina Bay underpass, you can't expect commuters to go out to the ferry and expect to get somewhere on time. They're going to worry about being stuck for 10 or 15 minutes behind the trains. I took the lead on that, worked with the community. We got a plan we all agreed on, got the funding later, and got it done. So when we're in politics, I'm not just looking at what's popular this week or this month or whatever, looking down the line. That was about eight years ago, and that's one part of why the ferry is going to work economically.
Yes, it will lessen the commute, and it will lessen our carbon footprint by having less cars on Highway 80. As we're pushing more and more people out, as we're growing, more people are driving down Highway 80, so this is going to be a great thing for our community and against decreasing the carbon footprint that we have.
I think a ferry would be a good idea for tourists to come in and hopefully bring in business. Thank you.
The ferry is a beautiful means of transportation, particularly since Bard is getting pretty crowded. But what I would like to see is, you know, after Vallejo had the ferry, they managed to get a lot of hotels there, because the hotels in San Francisco are really expensive. And that is part of why I posed Richmond, I mean, Richard posed Richmond Riviera, because that is a place where we can actually attract a lot of businesses off of the ferry, businesses like hotels.
Hi, I most definitely feel as though that the ferry is going to be great for our city, much like Cecil said. It's going to take a lot of cars off the road and reduce our carbon footprint. In addition to that, on the Economic Development Commission, we're currently looking to turn that into a business improvement district, because we currently have 7,000 visitors at the Rosie the Riveter Center each month. And now with the ferry coming, we have the opportunity to triple that. And so we're looking to make that another face of our city. We have the freeway exit right there, and we want to make sure that you can eat, shop, and play, and get on the ferry, and go do the same in San Francisco. Thank you.
Hi, yes, I do believe the ferry is a great idea for Richmond. It's already here. I think that... Sorry, I get nervous. It's another form of transportation, and we need that. And also, let's get started on bringing in more businesses to Richmond so that we get more traffic coming in from San Francisco instead of the other way. Maybe, no.
It's a wonderful idea. I supported the ferry several years ago, and it was a great success. When you look at what's happening on the freeway, we're becoming another Los Angeles, bumper to bumper. It's not just commute hour, but throughout the day and even on weekend. So the ferry would be extremely welcome to the city of Richmond and an asset.
Here we come to our final question of the evening. It's another 30-second question.
It's another 30-second question. The question is, where do you see Richmond in five years? And our first respondent will be Nat. Where do you see Richmond in five years?
Well, it's very easy. If you don't put the right city council people on the council, it can be pretty drastic. If you put and elect the right people on the council, Richmond has a lot of progressiveness, and it can be a beautiful and wonderful city in the future. But it all depends upon the leadership. That's where it starts, and it's up to the citizen of this community to determine which direction Richmond will go, stagnation, move forward as a progressive city in the state of California.
Richmond in five years will be able to see its first class of students go off to college, having received the support of the new Department of Children and Families. And so we're gonna be able to see the impact and hopefully see an increase in our college-going students. We're also gonna have the opportunity to see them utilize the Richmond promise at a higher quantity and avoid that summer melt. And so when I get excited about the next five years, I also see a lot of new businesses, smaller businesses that have purchased their property, which means that they're gonna stay here long-term, being able to utilize the ferry services on the weekends as well. Thank you.
Richmond in five years will be determined by the job of our new city manager. Ada and myself were on the team that helped select the city manager, and we believe that we selected someone who will move us forward in the right direction. Richmond has no here here. As Gertrude Stein said, there is no there there. Well, there is no here here, but with the developments along McDonald Avenue, we will have a here here, and people who take the train or take BART or the buses will know they've arrived in Richmond.
We have a here here. It's us. Richmond is here right now. Five years from now, it'll be the safest city in the country. It'll have teeming business and economic development. People will be able to live in an equitable city where they will have social justice steeped out from the citizens to our public servants. We will have public servants that will do the right thing for our city and for us. Thank you very much.
I'm hoping that Richmond is going forward in those five years with people who understand nuances, who understand shades of gray. I grew up in a household where both my parents were Ivy League science majors, so I didn't grow up in a black-and-white world, an ideological world. I grew up in a world where I learned that if you want to make real change in the world, it's not ideological, it's not about slogans, it's about complex institutions, complex people, complex issues. I hope we have leadership like that, and with that leadership, we can make Richmond everything it deserves to be.
We will have a clean, beautiful, thriving city with a hospital, with grocery stores, with sidewalks for those of you and us that are not able to just get on top of the hill and walk. We have to be able to provide for every community member, especially those that need sidewalks to walk to and from a location. Shopping, dining, entertainment, Richmond will be the place to be.
I think it depends on who is gonna be governing the city. We can't say where it's gonna be unless we're gonna be the one serving on the council, and it depends on the leadership of the city as to where they move it forward, if they're gonna, you know, have housing for everybody, jobs for everybody, crime is down. So it depends on the leadership of the city. Thank you.
So I agree with Nat and Ms. Thompson that where the city is will depend upon who we elect to counsel. Now, the things we need to do is, we really need to see the Hertog development through. Otherwise, we could see up to 100 personnel cuts. We need to have good finances. Next three years are gonna be really challenging, but to you all, I say, please, volunteer, particularly volunteer in the lives of our teenagers because we need, you know, they need to have the promise to fulfill their potential instead of sliding into crime. Thanks.
Well, Richmond in five years will be a model city, not just for the state, but for the entire country, on how to move forward without leaving anyone behind. As this country goes through this era of displacement and gentrification, I want Richmond to be at the forefront of the conversation, showing cities how to develop and how to build housing without pushing people aside or kicking people out because they don't fit the new song. I really see Richmond in the next five years actually working towards Richmond 2050, so that way we can be a completely financially independent city and not depend on any state or federal government.
In the next five years, I see Richmond having developed 23rd Street, beautifying it, and I see Main Street Initiative already reaching its goal of developing McDonald Avenue because I understand that change takes time, and Richmond Main Street Initiative has been working on developing 23rd Street, so I think my five years are gonna get there.
Okay, and thank you. That wraps up our candidates forum tonight. I want to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight. We had a good slate here. I want to... And of course, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight, and make sure you go vote on November 6th. And in particular, I'd like to thank the Curbside Kitchen and East Brother Brewing Company for opening up specially tonight to allow us to have this event here, so. Get out and vote, November 6th. Thank you.